The other day.
Right.
of Appeals meeting pursuant to Governor Haley's March 28, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 extending certain COVID measures. This meeting is being held, conducted in person and via remote means, remote participation as well. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for on the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 872-580-911, or join the meeting through the link posted in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a recording of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. I'd ask you to shut off any gadgets that make any noise or vibrate in any way, shape, or form, and if there's going to be a lot of conversation, if you could do so on the hall, that would be, that would be helpful. The first thing that we usually do at our meetings is we take a roll call vote of all board members. After that, we ask that whoever is participating by phone make sure that we can identify you. Our staff, Sarah Clock on my right, will read the hearing notice, and the representative or the attorney or the person who is responsible for the application will have a chance to present their case. Anyone in favor will have up to five minutes to speak, and then I will read all correspondences. Anyone against or has, that has a question will also get up to five minutes, and then the applicant can rebut anything that they heard that they don't agree with. Members will ask questions, hear further information. We will close the public hearing, deliberate, and generally we vote on the applications. Not always, it depends. All votes will be taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we close via verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. At this point, we will do a roll call of all board members authorizing this form of meeting, starting with Mr. Veatch.
David H. Veatch, and I approve this form of meeting.
Ed Acton, I approve.
Paul C. Semple, I approve this form.
Lee Hevy, I approve this form.
Stephen D. DeBoer, and I approve.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
And Randy Parash, I approve as well. We are a citizen board made up of volunteers, and we have five members that are generally the voters. One is absent today, so voting today will be David Veatch, Edward Acton, Paul Semple, Virginia Fenwick, and myself. And we also get input from all our members as a general rule, but that's will be how the voting goes. In order to prevail on your application, the applicant would need to get four out of five votes. That's the law in Massachusetts, a supermajority. So at this point, we have approval of minutes meetings held on June 5, 2025. Paul?
Yes, I'll move to approve the minutes as published for June 5, 2025.
I have some corrections.
Could you just second that?
I'll second that and, and offer, and on page five, the last page, top of the page, you find three references to July 14, and I said we want to change those three to July 17.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it for that.
That's it for that? Okay, so can we have a vote on that, starting with you, David?
And I vote yes.
And Ed?
Ed votes yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny? Ginny votes yes.
As do I. That's unanimous. Now, we have June 12, 2025. Paul?
Yes, I'll move to approve the minutes as published for June 12, 2025.
Dave Veatch seconds, and there are a few, a little bit more extensive in this case.
Okay, please go ahead.
So the first is at the bottom of page one, we, the sentence, well, members voting, and that sentence finishes with associate member. We want to add Steve DeBoer to follow that. On subsequent pages, there are 13 instances of David Nixon, who was not present at the meeting, showing his voting. And in those 13 instances, we would strike and substitute Steve DeBoer for Dave Nixon.
Thank you.
And then on, there are four instances on pages six, eight, nine, and 10 where the statement is that the vote 5-0, zero unanimously approved to continue application. I want to strike the words "to continue."
Thank you.
On those four, and that's in, on page six, same is true on page eight, page nine, and page 10.
Does anybody else have any corrections?
So I, I vote yes.
Okay, Ed?
Ed votes yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, that's unanimous. So our first application is 25-043 Kendall P. Kellaway Jr., Susan M. Kellaway. Whenever Sarah's ready, she will read the advertisement.
Application number 25-043 Kendall P. Kellaway Jr. and Susan M. Kellaway care of George Riley, 63 Brook Trail Road, Brewster, Mass. 02631. Owners of property located at 255 Seapine Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 12K Block 4, Lot HC18. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the construction of a covered entry and porch. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 24.4 feet from the Westerlea butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed additions comply with the required setbacks. The existing building coverage is 4,392 square feet, 11.7%, and the proposed building coverage is 4,667 square feet, 11.97% or 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 39,633 square feet of buildable upland in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5 via the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. I'm George Riley, representing the Kellaways. As Sarah said, the lot is non-conforming because the building is 24 feet, 24.5 from the west property line, and the building coverage is 0.79, 1.79% over the, I'm sorry, 1.7, 1.07, I'll get it down, percent over the, the building coverage requirement. The application is requesting to really a, a small addition to the coverage by extending the, the entry canopy about four feet out and then connecting that canopy to the garage along the house by a porch roof coverage. And that's pretty much it. The house is quite set back quite far from the road. It's really not visible very much, and given the architectural style of the house and the abutting neighboring houses, you can see, I think it'll probably fit in and really hardly be noticed at all.
So it's your position it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood?
Absolutely not.
All right. So, thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this project? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will read the two correspondences. One is from Judith Giorgio, our health agent. She tells us on July 8, 2025, she has no concerns about the proposed covered entry and porch. We also have a note from Christine McCarthy, and if you could just tell your client there's a balance at the Town of Chatham, and it's rather modest.
Very modest, yes.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so that concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? If so, please indicate. Seeing none. Are there questions from the board? Please don't be reticent. Just, yes?
Hi, I wanted to ask you, if you knew, what were the additions that were made in 2024 to the home?
2024?
Well, I noticed on the field card, it says that there were additions that were made.
I, I really don't know. I think they're, they put on a new pergola. They did some work with windows, but that's really.
Nothing that needed to go to the zoning board, because I saw that.
No.
So nothing that is what bumped up the coverage?
No.
So the coverage is over?
Right. I'm not really sure why the coverage went over. I know that the property was subdivided, and then the property line between the two properties was changed, and there was, I think, a mistake in the survey card, and that's why the, the property line was moved up, but, but I'm not sure why it went over now. I don't think it has anything to do with these people have just really bought the house.
We may have an answer from that, from Sarah, if you, would you like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Prior to the change in the FEMA maps, the buildable upland on this lot was over 41,000 square feet, so it would have met the 10% that was required. When the maps changed, it dropped it down to just over 39,000, which caused it to be 11.07%.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Ed Acton, question?
It looks like there's going to be some dormers added to the, the front of the house at some point?
I think yes. They're changing the window structure on the top to accommodate the.
Okay, and?
I don't think that has anything to do with the, the building coverage issue at all.
No, it just looks like it's probably going to be an increase in habitable space.
Oh, I don't think so, unless you count standing in the window with the overhang as habitable space. I'm not sure that it does. There was no intention of that, as far as I know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Anybody, please? Okay, so Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Ed Acton votes yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. David Veatch?
Well, it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it, I find it meets our criteria. It's a nice-looking addition of a porch and, and entry, and extending the entry, so I will support it.
Ed?
I as well. It meets our criteria and certainly not substantially detrimental.
And Ginny?
Well, I have good news and bad news. The good news is it looks like the coverage is only 275, not 285, so that's actually lower than what they're asking for. But I, I don't love the going, already being over and, and going over. It's, according to my calculation, it's, it's a 6% change. It's, it's totally going to fit in the neighborhood. That's not it. But, you know, it's a double lot, this lot. Most of the lots in Seapine are not this large. And I sort of feel like, well, I'm torn with this, so I want to hear what the rest of my colleagues say. But on the one hand, you know, it's a large lot, so 275 square feet, not a big deal. But on the other hand, it's a large lot, so why should it be over at all? It's, there should be plenty of room for what they have, you know, what they need, so.
Okay.
So I'm conflicted on that.
That's an interesting calculation. Lee?
Well, I initially was concerned about going over, building coverage-wise, since it's already over. But Sarah's explanation of the maps changing, that's nothing that we can control. It is, it is definitely not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood to reconfigure the entry. So if I were voting, I would be voting for it.
Okay, and Steve?
Yeah, I guess I, I had the same feeling as Lee just mentioned, that, you know, they're already over the coverage and going further over, but Sarah explained that, well, I think that, you know, it really wasn't their doing that caused that to happen. And, you know, I think they're trying to, to change the aesthetic of the house a little bit to make it a little bit nicer and, and modern. So, you know, they are going over, but it's, it's because of no fault of their own, so I guess I'd be okay with it.
And Paul, your thoughts?
I think I agree with, with Dave Veatch in terms of his approach to this. I do understand that there is a change in the overall coverage, but it's pretty minor, minor. And given the way the house is set, it's really set way back in such that there is no impact, as I, nearly as I can see on the neighborhood. So I don't think it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And, and I also take Ginny's approach in terms of, when I see it's already over and they want to go over more, I think, what a nerve at first. And then, you know, then I go down there and I go into the driveway, and there's no way I could in good faith say that this change would be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. I'd like to see the neighborhood even figure out it happened. You know, you'd have to really have some serious vision. So I would never vote no on it, but it does raise our antennas, just so if you're surprised, Mr. Riley, that's why. That's why, because we always notice that. So a word to the wise. And so I would vote in favor. Are you ready to vote, Ms. Fenwick? Do you think?
Yeah, I, well, I just add that it was criteria three. I agree, it's not substantially more detrimental, but I, I felt like the extent of the proposed increase in the non-conforming nature was a little large for something that's, you know, aesthetic. It's not really necessary. It's not like it's a covered area from the garage to the front area, or, but anyway, I appreciate the feedback from my colleagues, so I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application.
I think we, oh yeah, we, did we close?
I think we've already closed.
Yeah, you're right.
So I'll move to approve the application as submitted. The only condition I would add would be that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Given the fact that it's set down so far in the property and a large lot with fairly good isolation, I don't think we need our other conditions.
Everybody?
I would.
Have to vote with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so?
Dave Veatch seconds and votes yes.
Ed Acton votes yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
See you next time. Our next application is 25-044 Patrick Sclafani and Jennifer Sclafani, 51 Saddleworth Way in Middleton, and this is about 35 Evans Way in Chatham, whenever Sarah's ready.
Application number 25-044 Patrick J. Sclafani and Jennifer C. Sclafani, 51 Saddleworth Way, Middle, Middleborough, Mass. 026, 02346. Owners of property located at 35 Evans Way, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 3F Block 27, Lot B24. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,057 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,009 square feet, where 2,900 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 22,579 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you very much, Chair, committee members. My name is Patrick Sclafani. Just a point of clarification on the actual announcement. We don't live at 51 Saddleworth Way anymore. We sold that before we moved to 35 Evans Way. So we, we're full-time residents here at 35 Evans Way, South Chatham. That was in 2021, so.
Oh, it's fine.
Okay.
We won't hold it against you.
All right, thank you. So basically, we want to, so we currently live in approximately 1,000 square feet, and we want to expand over to the south of our existing structure, another 1,000 square feet, two-car garage, a bedroom, bathroom, a office, and a new stairwell with a new entry, as you can see from the elevations. We're kind of set back from the road. The struc, the new structure will not exceed the existing width of the current house that we have there. Going south, we have plenty of setback to the south, to the neighbor on the south side of that, the new structure. And west, which is the back of the house, there's plenty of setback all the way to the conservation land.
Okay, so do you have a copy of the criteria? Or often when, when you don't have a representative, I, I go through it with you. Would you like me to do that?
Sure, I'd appreciate that.
All right. So we do have 12 criteria. They're not all applicable, so I'll just go through the ones that are. So you think your, your, your site is, is appropriate for this project?
Yes, very much so, and I think we have a couple letters of support that indicate that.
Yes, you do. And you think that it's compatible, which, at the end of the day, with this project, it'll look compatible to other neighboring properties?
It'll look compatible, and I think it'll be an enhancement to the neighborhood.
Okay. And you think that it won't have an impact on the natural environment, vegetation, water bodies, and the like?
No idea.
Nope? And, and the scale sighting in mass, you don't think it'll overwhelm the neighborhood, the visual character?
No, it's, it's not a, I mean, I know it's doubling the size of our house, but it's still within a, a reasonable looking home compared to some of the other homes in, in the neighborhoods around, surrounding us.
Yeah, and obviously, it won't impact traffic flow, noise, and litter. And at the end of the day, would you say that this is not substantially detrimental to your neighborhood?
No, it is not substantially detrimental. And I'm going to be on site for the whole time of the construction. I just retired, so I'm going to make sure I, I'll contract it myself, so.
Okay. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of the application? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will read the correspondences. The first one is from our, from our health agent, Judith Giorgio. She tells us on July 8, 2025, that she reviewed the plan to renovate and add to this property. The Board of Health approved the property for an additional bedroom with an IA system in October of 2023. The approval has since expired, and the applicant will have to go back to the Board of Health for an updated approval. And then we have a letter in favor from Catherine Glanz, May 19, 2025. She tells us she lives on Evans Way directly across the street. She's, regrets that she can't attend the meeting, and that she'd like us to know that she is in full support of the renovations, and to let her know if she needs any, if we need any further information. Then we have a note also in favor from Sandra Burns, and she is also somebody that lives on the same street. And she tells us in July 5, 2025, that she has known your family and your parents for decades, and they're fortunate to have you as neighbors. They're looking forward to seeing the planned remodeling. She was fortunate to have seen
area, the living space. But it's appropriate because it's a current, currently, it's a pretty modest home. The lot size is, you know, even though it's, you know, it's under the, it's in an R60, but it's still almost a little over half an acre. But I love the fact that the height is, again, that's the, I think, the successful use of the topography, adding all that space to levels, but yet it's not overwhelming the current home. So, and then the building coverage is only 8.9, so it's under that, meets all the setbacks, and it meets our criteria, in my opinion, not substantially more detrimental.
All right, Steve?
I agree with everything that Ginny said.
And Lee?
As do I.
Well?
Yeah, it's pretty clear that this satisfies our criteria.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree as well, and would note that it's, even though he's more or less doubling the size, it's still significantly less than the largest allowed on the lot, 2,900 square feet. So, and I agree with all previous, so.
Yeah, and I was surprised to see that neighborhood. So it's the first time I've been down there. So very interesting, and it looks like it's going to be a great project. So Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I think probably we should use our usual standards here, although I'm trying to think about the neighbors and who's available on the opposite side of the road. How are those houses used? Are they used in the summertime for rentals, or?
The ones directly across from us that submitted the letter are full-time. To my north, full-time; to my south, full-time. At the back is the conservation land. Mostly everybody, there's a couple houses that are summer residents. Primarily, we're all just there year-round. It's a really quiet, nice neighborhood.
All right, well, I'm sure you'll be quiet in doing your construction, hopefully. I will move to approve the application with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. I'm not sure I see a need for any additional conditions.
Nope, okay.
I agree with that. I will second that and vote yes.
Ed votes yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Thank you very much. It's unanimous. That last portion is because often we limit construction to the time of year that's not summer, you know?
Yep.
But we're not doing that here.
Okay.
You got lucky.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you for coming. Next up, we have 166 Landing Lane. Roland Trailer and Deborah Trailer, 25-045. When Sarah's ready.
Application number 24-045. Roland R. Trailer Jr. and Deborah Trailer, care of Tom Fitzgerald, 90 Route 6A, Orleans, Mass. 02653. Owner of property located at 166 Landing Lane, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 13K Block 30, Lot R11. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number 22-110 granted on December 1, 2022, which allowed for the demolition of the existing deck and the construction of a new screen porch. The applicant now seeks to modify this special permit to allow for an increase in building coverage. The approved building coverage was 2,717 square feet, and the constructed building coverage was 2,752 square feet, where 2,850 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 21,007 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and 14, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the bylaw.
Mr. Fitzgerald, welcome.
Thank you. This was a project that had a few phases to it. We were here for a few of the phases this was going on during COVID, and somehow, the numbers didn't end up the way that they ended up. I didn't do the original hearings, but the, what is it, like 52 feet or something that were here? So Sarah told me that we had to come back for this.
So the project just became a little bit bigger than you had gotten a permit for?
No, I don't know. That's what, we can't figure out, but everything was built to what the size was on there, but somewhere between the engineering and what the original application was, there's that 50 or so feet of differentiation.
Okay, so do you think as it is now, it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will read the correspondences. The health agent tells us on July 8, 2025, that she has no concerns. That's Judith Giorgio. And we also have a letter from Richard and Kristen Zabo, 70 High Point Drive in Chatham, on July 9, 2025. They say they write in support of the application. The improvements are consistent with the character of the neighborhood and are welcome betterment to the Riders Cove Landing Association, and they ask us to approve the application as is. And now, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against or has a question? No. Questions from the board. David Veach?
So I just, so basically, this came to light when the as-built was done, correct?
Yep.
And, but, you know, no, where specifically, and it wasn't necessarily specifically in the sunroom part in the back, which was the second part of the project. It's just what it ended up being.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And Ed, anything?
Nope, nope.
Nope. Anybody on this end have any questions? Anybody shaking their head no? Okay, Paul?
I guess I, I guess I still do have a question, and that is, are you saying that it was, in fact, constructed according to the plans that were submitted to the building commissioner to begin with?
Yes. The building was built to the spec. I guess when the original, when we were here for the back deck, that that number was incorrect, I guess. So I guess.
So the number, the number is consistent with the plans, but it's not consistent with what the application was?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay.
And Ginny, I'm sorry, please.
I'm not sure that Mr. Fitzgerald's going to know this. Did you say you were not part of the first project, which was the front porch?
I was contracted, but the architect was the one that took this hearing.
Okay. And so, and so there were two hearings in front of ZBA. One was for the front porch,
Yep.
and then one was for the back porch?
Correct, yep.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay, Paul then.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Lee?
Well, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem with this. I think that had these numbers come before us originally, we would have approved it. So I have no problem with approving the modification.
And Steve?
Yeah, I, you know, I was going to ask why, you know, I think it's actually 35 feet that it's over, but, you know, how that could happen. Apparently, you're not quite sure. Something was maybe made a little wider than it should have been, or longer, or whatever, but it's difficult to tell now, I guess, at this point. But it's within the setbacks. It's still under the lot coverage. So I don't think it really harms anything.
Okay, and Ginny?
Yeah, I agree with Lee and Steve. I did just take a peek at the previous two hearings because I was confused about what had happened here. Both of those porches, the front and the back, received unanimous support from all the board members. So the project itself was approved unanimously, not even questions, really. And I do, like Steve said, kind of go with the, would I have approved it, it is 35 feet. I would have approved it, would I have approved it? And the answer is yes. So I, I'm okay with the, with the small overage.
Yep, and David?
Yeah, I concur with the previous. It's, and it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood at all, so I will support it.
Ed?
As do I. I, you know, the 35 feet, I believe I would have approved, and the board would have approved originally, so I don't have an issue.
And Paul, your thoughts?
I agree with my colleagues.
Yep, I do too, and I agree with the reasoning. And it's still 100 square feet less than going all the way to the, to the max. So you have somewhat, some leverage, and so I would, I would support it. So Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
David seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
Sorry. As do I. That's unanimous. Thank you. And now.
Thank you.
See you next time. Thank you. Moving right along to 30 Pine Lane. Michael G. Lynch, 25-04, care of James M. Norcross Esquire. Sarah?
Application number 25-046. Michael G. Lynch, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 30 Pine Lane, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 13J Block 6, Lot G12B. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition and decks. The existing dwelling is nonconforming in that it is located 24 feet from the southerly of butter and 32.7 feet from the top of bank. The proposed additions will be nonconforming in that they will be located 20.5 feet from the top of bank where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,519 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,767 square feet, where 2,950 square feet is the maximum allowed. Also proposed is the installation of a footpath and kayak rack as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3A of the bylaw. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 36,801 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Attorney Norcross.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing Michael Lynch. As Sarah read, the application is for a couple of small additions to the back of the home. The primary part of the project is the addition of a new sunroom on the back, as well as a deck that you'll see on the second here. That's all right. So you see with the, the sunroom, and then there's a deck next to that, there's also a small deck that's proposed on the back of the garage. This is going to become the primarier, primary exterior, exterior area for the, for Mr. and Mrs. Lynch. As part of this, they're doing an extensive restoration project of the coastal bank that they've been through with the Conservation Commission. They're going to allow that existing lawns to naturalize. They're doing a significant amount of plantings. They're also creating a view corridor down the bank so that they'll be able to see the water from the, the new sunroom, which you can see there in the dash lines, from the, the new sunroom and the deck area. So it should create a nice backyard area for them with much more expansive views of the Frostfish Creek than currently exists. In terms of nonconformities, the existing house has a couple slight nonconformities relative to the street setback and the south lot line. It is also nonconforming as to the coastal bank. The only increase in nonconformity, nonconformity, excuse me, is that the proposed sunroom and deck will be located slightly closer to the coastal bank than the existing structures. Otherwise, the additions will meet all of the dimensional setbacks. We are increasing by about 250 square feet our building coverage, but as the advertisement read, we're still below the maximum allowed for this property. The second part of this application is the footpath and the kayak rack, because those are located in the conservancy district, also require a special permit from the zoning board. So those are included on the plan and are also included as part of our application. Just touching on a couple of the criteria, adequacy of the site in terms of size, I would suggest the size is adequate. It's a small increase in terms of building coverage and still below the maximum allowed for this property. We are going slightly closer to the conservancy district, but otherwise, we are meeting all dimensional setback requirements of the bylaw. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure, again, it's a very small expansion, and the structure is compatible with neighboring properties. The gross floor area numbers demonstrate that it's certainly right in line in terms of size with neighboring properties in this area. Suitability of the site, again, we suggest the site is suitable for the project. It will have no negative impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment. They, my clients are going back at the end of this month to the Conservation Commission. We expect they'll issue an order of conditions. That was a little bit more of a challenging process. There were some different versions of the project. Ended up scaling it back a bit, but at the end, conservation seemed satisfied with the plantings and the proposal that is put forth by the Lynch's. Number five, impact of scale sighting en masse. I suggest no negative impact on scale sighting en masse. The main aspect of the project is behind the home, which is largely unseen from neighboring properties. There is still existing vegetation that will remain on that coastal bank, and the relatively minor scale of the additions will minimize any impact as seen from the water side. The rest of the criteria are really not applicable for this application. So just quickly in summary, I'd suggest it is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, the correspondences are as follows. Judith Giorgio tells us on July 8, 2025, that as a health agent, she has no concerns with the addition of a sunroom and deck. The Conservation Commission tells us on July 10, 2025, that this property at 30 Pine Lane will be back in front of them on July 23. The project will be revised and conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Well and Protection Act. That concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody that would like to speak against this application or has a question? Online or in the room? Seeing no hands, anywhere? All right, we'll do questions from the board. David Veach?
I have no questions.
Ed?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
Lee?
My only question is, it looks like there's pilings or posts. There's no foundation under any of these decks, correct?
I believe that's correct, including the sunroom, I think. It's a.
And the sunroom's.
Piling on the, on the profile, it looks like, yep.
Okay, all right. And, and the deck on the side of the garage, just to make it easier to access that area?
I asked myself that question. I never asked the client the reason for it, other than that was something they were looking to have. So I'm not sure of their, their reason, but they were, there was a little bit of back and forth with conservation, so I know they found it was an important element for them to have that.
Because we actually came around when we went to visit the property. We came around that side. And I'll, I'll say, it was a little tricky to get around there. So maybe the stairs.
Could be for access, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Steve?
I was just going to ask about your timeline for when the construction might start taking place, because there's a project right next door, and it's a very small little street.
I, so they're doing some interior work right now, our clients, my clients are. So I'm not sure their timeframe for the exterior. Probably sometime in the fall would be their, their plan right now.
It might be a love activity there.
Yeah, they seem like they have a decent amount of area on their, on their property that they can keep the vehicles, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Ginny, please.
Ginny, I did watch the conservation hearing, and I think they covered off the increase in the nonconformity towards the coastal bank. They covered that off with mitigation. They were satisfied with that.
Right. Yeah, they were very happy with that, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just say that, you know, it's a deck, so it's, it's minimal in terms of the coastal bank compared to if it was an addition.
Yep.
Right. So, okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David seconds and votes yes.
Ed votes yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. We might as well start with Ginny.
Yeah, I think it's a, the conservation hearing, I didn't see all of it because it was so comprehensive. I was initially just reading the application, a little concerned about such an increase. But when you go to the site, you see that it's just a portion of the deck. It is not what's there today. All the decks, you know, that are there today are not coming out. So I, I liked that, and I think it's a beautiful site and a thoughtful plan, and I don't think it's substantially more detrimental. So I would support it.
And Steve?
I feel the same way. You know, it's behind the house. I don't think it's detrimental to anybody. And I think it's well done. I don't have an issue with it at all.
And Lee?
I agree with my colleagues, and I also think that what they're doing in terms of mitigation on that bank down to Frost Creek is really nice.
Yeah, and Paul?
Yes, I think it clearly will have no impact on the neighborhood. It won't be substantially more detrimental.
Ed?
Yes, not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, meets our criteria, and conservation. conservation seems like, you know, they've got it covered as far as the coastal bank and the replacement of the lawn with natural vegetation. So it seems like it's a win-win for everybody.
And Mr. Veach?
Yeah, I agree with all previous.
And as do I. So Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I think we should have a condition that all construction activity and vehicles will be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. There is a circle there, which presumably could be blocked with some construction vehicles, hopefully not happening often. Between June 30th and Labor Day, I'm not sure I see a need for the conditions on this situation either because the construction will be downhill, way behind the house. It seems to me we just, the primary condition is, is sufficient.
Yeah, I would agree, and I'll second and vote yes.
Uh, Ed votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Well, that was the penultimate application. Another vocabulary word for the day. That means second to the last. Yeah. I know, right? Yeah. Talking vocabulary. All right. 2029 Main Street is the next application, 25-047. And whenever Sarah's ready, we'll hear that last one.
Application number 25-047, Beechy Days LLC, care of William F. Riley, Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 229 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham Assessor's map, 16C Block 74, Lot 58. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a nonconforming accessory structure cottage on a nonconforming lot via the installation of a foundation. The cottage will remain nonconforming, located 4.4 feet from the Northerly Butter and 13.1 feet from the Westtherly Butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The building coverage will remain nonconforming at 2,059 square feet, 23.3%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming in that it contains 8,843 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Mr. Riley. And?
Good afternoon. This is Joe Fournier, the architect on this project. In the, I have to admit that I was a little befuddled this morning when I was getting ready for this, because I kept saying, why do we have to go to zoning? So I called a person who knows everything, not Jay, but Sarah.
Sarah, of course.
And Sarah said, well, because the building doesn't meet the setback, and you're elevating it by two feet, and so the increase in height within the setback means you need a special permit. So that's why we're here. We're elevating the building two feet, and it's going to be on the same footprint, and they're just going to rehab the structure. So April McKenty, who's a principal in the Beechy Days LLC, is here also, and I think they've done a great job on the front building, rehabbing that antique. And so, when they're done with this one, it's going to be a beautiful structure, a great addition, barely visible from the street. It's in the low point. All the buildings around it are much taller. So if there was ever a project I presented that was not substantially more detrimental, this is the one.
Okay. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wants to speak in favor? No. And I have some correspondences from Christina Basset on July 10th, 2025. She tells us that the back cottage is historically significant, and this is from the Historical Commission, and that, but the proposed changes do not material diminish its historical significance, so they do not impose a demolition delay. The structure is also a contributing structure to the Old Village National Register, but the changes do not constitute a substantial alteration, so they did not refer it to the Cape Cod Commission. Again, that's Christina Basset, and it was on July 10th, 2025. We also have a note from the Health Department, as usual, dated 7/8/2025, and the plan was reviewed. The, the full foundation will encroach on the Title V required setback of the leaching facility. Plans for the foundation and offset to leaching will need to be reviewed prior to approval of the Board of Health. Sure you're familiar with that?
Yes. I think the, basically, the requirement is that if the floor of the crawl space is below the top edge of the septic tank, then they would have to move the septic tank. But if the floor of the crawl space is above the septic tank, then they won't have to move it. So that's currently the plan. It's just to keep the, the floor of the crawl space above the top of the septic tank so they don't have to move it.
Okay. And you'll deal with the Board of Health as, as.
I'm gonna be out there measuring it myself.
All right. Very good. Very good.
That, that I'd like to see.
Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes, that's where I am, speak against? Please make it known. Or has a question? No. Questions from the board. Mr. Veach?
Well, I, I just was thinking about, we recently had, needed to modify a special permit for the height of a building that they'd put a foundation under, and so I'm, I'm just wondering if you built a little bit of cushion in to the, the figures for, that you've submitted to us, anyway.
Yes, we did, and we actually had our engineers review that as well for compliance. Yes.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
And Ed?
Uh, no questions.
Paul?
I wanted to, who came up with Beechy Days LLC?
That would be the McKenty family.
Ah, okay. All right, now I got it. Now, the, the renovation of the building in front is very nice compared to what was there before.
Yeah.
It really looks spectacular. I have no other questions.
Lee, you have it?
Just a quick one. You're not, you're not demolishing the structure. You're just keeping, keeping that and just.
Jacking it up, putting a foundation under it, so that it will be there 100 years from today as well.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Steve?
I don't really have any questions.
And Ginny, do you?
I have no questions.
All right, Paul then.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David seconds and votes yes.
Uh, Ed votes yes.
All votes yes?
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Steve?
Well, I think it's a good project as long as, you know, they can preserve the, the building that's there. It sounds like they're going to make an effort to do that. And it'll take it another 100 years into the future, so that's a good project.
Yes, well, when that happens, I'll be back to make the changes.
Sure.
Okay, Ginny?
Yeah, I think it's smart to put in the new foundation. The antique has turned out to be, it, it's amazing. It was really well done. And I just want to say again, and I think I said this at the previous hearing for that home, that I appreciate the interest of the family and the, the investment to save these historic homes in Chatham, and especially on Main Street, so.
Well, I, I want to say that the McKenty family is really special. They already own a home on Hallway Street that they've rehabbed, another contributing structure. They did the front building here, and they were so concerned about the old Cumberland Farms sitting there looking ugly, that they bought it and helped get it put into a useful use so now you can have Mexican food. That's the McKenty family. They're great, great folks.
Very good. And mark this day because I let you talk after the hearing was closed. You know, don't forget that. You owe me one. So, no, seriously, that was good input. Anybody else? Oh, yeah, who didn't deliberate? Lee?
I, I agree with what Ginny said. I really appreciate the family's, you know, willingness to, to do this. The project that they did in front of this cottage is lovely, and it really looks great.
And Paul, your thoughts?
I agree it certainly is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would just have Mr. Riley keep in mind that the reason he's not a doctor is because he couldn't do math. If you're going to also be dealing with the level of the floor for the septic system, let's be careful. Thank you.
Neither do I nor architect.
And Ed?
Certainly not substantial to the neighborhood. In fact, it, it looks like it's going to be quite the improvement. The house certainly out front came out very nice, and I'm sure this will be the same.
And David Veach?
I agree with all previous comments.
Yeah, as do I. So Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I think with our standard conditions, all construction activity and vehicles to be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction shall be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
David seconds and votes yes.
Uh, Ed votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We're done in less than an hour.
I know that. We can all go out and enjoy this beautiful day pretty soon. So, so, motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
David seconds and votes yes.
Uh, Ed Acton votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
And the, the alternates can vote too.
I vote yes.
Steve votes yes.
As do I. Good night, Chatham. Oh, what time is it?
3:56.
Officially 3:56. We are adjourned.